Any conflict of interest on the agenda for anybody in the board?
No.
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 Okay. We have one set of minutes for Tuesday, September 5th, in person. We were all here.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mike. Do I have a second? Second from Martha. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Tony, there should be another set of minutes under there, too.
Oh, okay.
Go to the next page.
This is Waterboard.
Go to the back of the Waterboard. What'd you do with it?
It disappeared.
Could've swooped it. Nice. This one disappeared.
Warrant, we have two. We have a warrant number 11 for Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by
Art.
Art. Items over a thousand. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hundred and 10,000. I'm sorry, no, 1100.
Yeah, 11,000. It's higher than normal this month, too, because we took on new employees, so we have to prepay a little bit.
Okay, Rescue Squad. 27,500.
That's our annual payment to Bennington Rescue.
Gravel and Land Development.
That's just sand from Crick Gravel and Land Development.
Innovative Surface Solutions for 5,445.23.
And that's the road chloride.
Was that the Corin? That's the Corin?
Yeah, the chlorine.
MSK Engineering Design for 4,523.17.
That's part of the investigation into the sloping off of the road on White Creek.
Motion to accept.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Warrant number six for Moved by Mike, seconded by
I'll second.
By Martha. The only thing was the New Frame Group for 1,700.
That was part of the water project.
All those in favor of warrant number six say aye.
Aye.
Just by word of information, Naomi Miller isn't here because she's stuck on the Cape. Unfortunately, the hurricane. Announcements, any announcements from the board?
I have one just before the meeting. We were notified that we did move forward with the MRF, which is the Municipal Energy and Resilience Project for Coal Hall and the Fire Station, which will get us the Energy Resilience Assessment Level One, which once that gets done will open us up to 500,000 brands to replace the energy system in Coal Hall and the firehouse. So that dovetails nicely into some plans we have here. So that was good news. So I was getting a little worried it was taking a while.
Good. Good. Public comments. Yes.
Can I come up?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't put your chair up. Just like chair.
Pull a chair up. And give your name.
Richard Jorgensen from Bank Street. Nice to see everyone again.
Yes.
Previously, I'd written Mr. Whitman and Mr. Kieranin and copied to all members of the board and our Hawks Avenue, Bank Street neighbors regarding the current status of the sheriff's activity. And I haven't received any response, so I'm here tonight with a neighbor, Paula, who's been here previously, to ask about activity, times and locations of patrols, budgeted hours they're being utilized, and if any speed limit enforcement has occurred. Since I was last here, I've learned of numerous reports of issues all around town. You're probably well aware of Cleveland Avenue, Maple Hill, certainly in the Hawks Avenue, Bank Street neighborhood. So very interested in what is happening. If the sheriff has a presence. I've seen the sheriff once since July 1st on Hawks Avenue, just cruising by, but no stationing of patrol vehicle. And don't know realistically whether we can expect one. It's been suggested that we're not likely to see a sheriff. We've seen the sheriff maybe once or twice. So I'm wondering what is happening? If they're reporting on their activity, is that public information that can be shared in some manner in a meeting, on the website, so we know what's going on? Plus, however, I would acknowledge a new sign on White Creek Road entering the village, alerting people that it's going to drop down the speed limit to 25. Perhaps that was done by PPW. So that was nice to see here recently. Some more signage, just to alert people. You may be aware that there are some new slow down signs on Bank Street and Hawks Avenue. Out of pocket expense by residents to try to slow the roll, so to speak, of people. And people have actually done that, but some residents have suffered consequences for putting up signs where people sped up while they'd been close to the road. So, you know, we've learned that one neighbor on Hawks Avenue was literally kind of forced to jump off the road. And I understand someone on Maple Hill Road had to jump off the road where someone was intimidating.
So, without having to be redundant, people's lives are certainly at risk. Maybe we need to do something collectively as a town, have a speeding summit with the sheriff, with the board, with more residents to put our heads together, because it's pervasive, obviously. So, but I'm interested in specifics. We'd really like to know what's going on. A new contract was signed. We know there are constraints, perhaps, in the sheriff's ability to honor the contract to fulfill the hours. But we'd really like to know what's happening. And maybe that information's available. I'd like to learn what's going on.
So how we're going about this right now is we're going to approach this in three steps, which we've talked about before. And just so you know, I was talking to the deputy assigned here. We're going to work on static patrols on Bank Street. There's going to be limited time, because we have limited hours, very, very limited hours. So moving forward from here, we're going to look at it in three parts. We're going to, first off, I brought this up for the meeting, a couple meetings ago. You've seen these signs, they have them in Arlington and Manchester, they put on poles, they radar signs to kind of warn you about how fast you're going.
You know, I've seen them, sure.
Yeah, and they do have some calming effect, and I'm trying to order two. The company's really slow in coming back. So we'll rotate them around town, because like you said, this isn't your neighborhood's problem, it's actually becoming kind of a town-wide problem. So we'll have the ability to move these around town, so that we're getting some indication to people out. You know, reminders, look at your speedometer. This is, you think you're being reasonable, but perhaps you're not being reasonable at all. Sometimes it does have that effect, where I wonder how fast I can go going at this sign. So, you know, there's people out there, you can't count on everything. The other thing we're doing is the law enforcement liaison from the select board, which is Ms. Kilikowski, is going to be meeting with the commander from the state police barracks and the sheriff, and try and work out some way with our limited hours and resources to try and address the whole town, how we get more things done that way. And because budget season is coming up, the third part is, and I've talked about this before, is more hours for the sheriff. And what we need to do is have a realistic conversation with the sheriff, as he's planning his budget and manpower, and we're planning ours. If we allocate enough money for 40 hours, is that reliable? Is that reasonable, that that's going to be achieved? Or should we just budget for 30? And then we'll have a better way of looking at things. And I can keep you informed of the static reports of what goes on over there. And we have done several speed studies on Hawks and Banks. You know, there's always the outliers, which you well know. It's a fairly moderate speed on Hawks, it averages 28, just about on the four different surveys we did. Yours is about 35, which is the oddity of it transitioning where it does from 25 to 35. But that's the way we're looking at, addressing it with our limited resources until next year, which unfortunately is no, really no way for the sheriff to come up with the manpower and for us to budget for it, to cover it. So, you know, I think that's the best way for us to handle it right now.
Is the sheriff telling you or the board? You're obviously being billed. I don't know how the contract works. It's billable hours, so you know exactly how many hours they're billing for.
Yeah. And I read all their day sheets of anyone who operates in town, and they do do patrols of all the streets. That's why I've asked them to do static, which is not efficient, but just to give you a sense of presence over on Bank Street, because you can sit there for an hour, maybe once a week. But what that'll generate will be slowing traffic for like one hour, but it might start getting in somebody's mind that there's going to be a sheriff there. But again, with 69 and a half more miles of road, he has to go to other places. It's really a question of getting more manpower, more hours.
So can you tell me just how many hours they're spending? Are they
I had that all at the last meeting. It's, I think, were you at the meeting, I was talking about that? It's about a few hours of their month. They're actually on those two streets, you know, Grandview, Hawks and Banks, you know, because they're patrolled through there. But that's why I asked them to do static, show static, do a radar sheet that shows what's going on.
But are they fulfilling the contract?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. No, actually, it's far better, but you know, besides the patrolling, they handle a lot of other calls. They also have to back up the state police, that's all part of the contract. So there's just, it's, it just really boils down to 10 hours a week. It's just not a lot of time.
So are you averse to publicizing, you know, their activity?
That's not really, having been in law enforcement for 25 years, it's not really what you want to advertise, where you're going and what you're doing, but I will talk to the sheriff and see what he wants to discuss publicly. I'm not even sure what part of what I get is, is actually a public record, to tell you the truth, because it is their activity with case numbers and things, so.
I think if you look on the internet and in the news, you see that the sheriff and the state troopers are really busy in Chasbury with criminals. And I kind of was thinking that what's going to happen is as we get the overflow from Bennington, and we're going to get more and more criminal activity. And that eats up hours like crazy.
Well, for me personally, and not speaking for any other resident, but I'd be interested in knowing what that activity's like. It's 10 hours a week, okay, so we, you know, the sheriff had to deal with a dog complaint for five hours.
Right.
Okay. That only left five hours to cover 70 miles of road. Just interested in knowing how it's going.
It may not, like Dave said, it may not be public information.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. We'll find out.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm not sure what part of a patrolman's day sheet is public information. It would have to, at minimum, it would have to be a written public records request. But, you know, in generalities, you know, it's, if you think that nothing is going on, it's, that's just incorrect. It's just, you know, we're talking about a quarter mile of road, and we're talking about
Let me interrupt. It's not that I don't think anything's going on. I'm interested in knowing what is going on. And I have, you know, a specific interest, obviously, in speeding. Now, it's not limited to Bank Street or Hawks Avenue. I'm concerned as well, reading about Cleveland Avenue, or Maple Hill, or East Road. So, you know, we're stretched, obviously. People are engaging in dangerous behavior. And
Well, let me see what I can, yeah. I'll give you a call, you know, maybe, let me talk to them. Let me see what we can let you know.
Yeah.
Not quite, actually not quite sure, because part of it isn't
We're going to stay, you know, connected, obviously. We do appreciate another sign. I saw that driving in from White Creek yesterday afternoon, and I said, wow, look at that. Thank you. You know, it's just another visual.
Well, that's what these signs are, if I can get this company to respond, because he's actually worked pretty well. And if it's just up there for a little bit, we rotate it to one of the other streets and it comes back, it's just kind of a reminder, when people are coming down the road, you're actually like at 40, you're not at 25 or 35, you're actually getting up there.
And if there are other things that could be done, I'd be happy to get involved to organize, you know, I've referred to a speeding summit, get people together, they start talking, you know, how do we as a community address a significant problem where we can empathize, you know, regardless of where we live in town.
Can I ask a question? How do you differentiate between kind of anecdotal accounts of speeding and the data we have? Like, how does that?
Well, the data we have so far, like for Hawks, shows that the average and mean are right around 27, 28 miles an hour. Banks came up at 35, which is a fairly consistent speed all the way back to the New York border. It drops, I forget where, but it drops to 25 not too far from where you are. And it's a perceptual thing with drivers, but the 85th percentile is well around 35 miles an hour. But that being said, it still doesn't matter, because the speed limit's 25. So we have to find a way of addressing people to get them to slow down in that section. Yeah, I mean, and that's the thing, and part of that, no matter how you slice it, is you need to have some potential for running into law enforcement.
Right.
And that's the big piece that's missing here. Because we can put up the signs, we can do other things, but there has to be the idea that there's people out there. I think that's where the board, starting with their representative to the sheriff and the commander of the barracks, we try and weedle as much time as we can to specific speeding assignments.
Right. I don't know if it's practical, or if we'd want to have it here in Chasbury, but in New York City, on the parkways, which obviously are fast roads, but with limits, people are ticketed as a result of cameras being used. So they're being videoed, obviously. And if they're exceeding, their plate is being photographed, and they're going to get a ticket in the mail.
You'll have to take up with your state rep, because that's a state law that has to be passed for that.
Yeah, it's a big leap, obviously, but, you know, it's one city's kind of strategy. And I'm sure not everyone's getting ticketed.
No, no.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I'll get in touch with you. Let me find out what we can do.
Hopefully, we hear from this company. I've been a proponent of using digital speed monitors, and, you know, they're in a lot of communities, and maybe people will, as you suggested, you know, try to fool with it, but it may be helpful.
Okay, good.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Should we take a look at the cash flow, Dave? I should say with a caveat, I was not able to present the closed month of August, because there's still a payroll that is not in the system yet. So I will project it to budget as soon as I've got that in, it'll probably be at the next meeting. But just taking a look at the first part of this month, you can see we've gotten, oh yeah, I didn't say something about that, too. That's deceptive as well. We do not have just $130,000 in tax receipts. My check scanner spectacularly self-destructed last week, and the replacement I got does not work, and the new replacement is not yet installed. So it was pretty good, there was a gas skid or something was melting all over the checks, and that was a thing to see. So anyway, so you see $130,000 in tax receipts, that's understated by probably a factor of three, but as soon as I can either get to the bank or get a functioning scanner and get those accounted for. That inter-fund transfer is, I believe, I may have talked about it last time, but you wrote some pretty big checks drawn on the reserve account, so that's correcting that, getting it back in the general fund. So you see the, they're big receipts, but also big outgoing, if you want to look at the bottom half there, Dave. Yeah, the disbursements of 270, that sort of balances out that 210 that you saw going back to the general fund. So these numbers are not terribly meaningful, for the reasons I've already said. There's, August was not finalized, and there's money not in there yet, but it sort of shows you a snapshot of what the days have been like. Want to take a quick look at reserves, Dave? The one thing I wanted to say about this, that's all that money moving around that I was just talking about, money owed to the general fund, so those two columns in the middle there are making the general fund whole. We talked to our external auditors about, we've been carrying this, and I've mentioned it several times, carrying an apparent negative cash balance in the professional audit line, Dave's pointing to it there, 8:30. That's, that is an artifact of the very first time we had an audit, and it's silly, it's not a meaningful number. It looks bad, but it's not bad. It's just that the first time we had an audit, it was not yet budgeted. So we've talked about how to get that, to back to a zero cash balance, and we asked him whether he agreed with us it would be appropriate just to have that be a budgeted number every year in the budget, rather than having a transfer from reserves, which is how we have been handling it the last several years. He agreed with us that that's actually a more sensible way to handle that. So with the upcoming budget that Dave will probably be working on pretty soon, you'll see that there's, that that will be included in the general fund budget. Is that, is that all clear? I don't have much else to say about this. Yeah.
Yeah. In case anyone's wondering about all the negatives on there, this is because of projects, it's all going to be cleared up when the reserve, money goes into the reserve accounts when we collect enough taxes. It just looks kind of bad right here.
Yeah, yeah, that's just because the voter-approved transfers to reserves have to happen once we've gotten through the tax collection season, so that always happens the last
The building season doesn't coincide with our tax collections.
Yeah, so those negatives are going to go away, except for the professional audit will go down to negative 3,000 or something. Any questions about any of that?
No. No checks destroyed?
They were not destroyed. It's a miracle. It was, it was pretty bad. They were really gummy. But I managed to clean them off, the ones that were affected. Yeah. So that's that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the survey results.
Yes. So the Chasbury Economic Development Committee engaged in a survey this past month or so that was ongoing from recommendations that the ARPA committee had given to survey the town about the property that is next door to Coal Hall, where the Town Green and Community Center will be located, right where the village garage used to be before it was taken down. We had some really great results, and thank you to everybody that had participated in those survey results. We had asked just a few questions on what the citizens of Chasbury would like to see in both the Town Community Center and the Town Green, and they had some options, as well as an option to write in their own response and things. And so, Dave, if you can bring up the document that was available, that would be great. How this will be funded is a group of a lot of different types of funding, some of it being the ARPA funds, some will be private donations, and then we will build the state and federal grants. And this project will be happening over the next five years or so. Some of the ARPA money has to be spent at a very specific timeframe. And we'll be working with both the town select board and the Economic Development Committee and the Recreation Committee, of course, all of our Chasbury citizens, and the Bennington County Regional Commission as well, to kind of work together to make some of these ideas possible. So, Dave, if you can go down to the survey results. So the first question that they had asked is what we'd like to see in a community center, and the big ones, which were not much of a surprise, are a meeting event and fitness space and offerings for youth and seniors. And that very much dovetails into the ARPA survey that we had done for folks really wanting to see places for connection and community. And so we are recommending that when we create this community center, that we have kind of a large, open concept space that can kind of meet a lot of these needs, including a space for the town to a space for the town to gather at Town Meeting Day, that would have correct Zoom capabilities and sound system and things like that. Have a space that can be used for seniors and youth, either for an after-school program or kind of a space for seniors to gather, to have a space for medical pop-ups if they happen, because we've lost our beloved Shasbury Medical Center. And also places for community partners like SASH, which is support and services at home, and other agencies in the community that are looking for spaces to work with our citizens but don't have a space at this moment. So we would work with finding matching grants, and David and myself and others are working on trying to leverage the ARPA funds as much as we can to kind of create some of these spaces for you. So that was the first question. And then the second question was regarding what folks would like to see in the Town Green. And right now, the town doesn't have a downtown recreation center. We definitely have the beautiful Howard Park that we are working very hard to kind of, and the Recreation Committee is doing a great job of making changes there and working to fix some of the things that have been long needing fixing there. But what the survey kind of was describing is to have a large green with some seating areas, some pickled benches, a place that folks can come to and have their lunch on their lunch break. There had been talk about having some kind of area that might be a skating rink like there was in the past over on Cleveland Avenue, if those of you remember that delight. I think the Lions might have been the instigators behind that at one time. And potentially, at some point, an ability to connect both Howard Park and this Town Green to be the place. So that was the biggest kind of percentage of responses. And then the other big response in this category and question was having a gazebo or a stage space that could accommodate community events. And there were many citizens that wrote in to say they'd like to see the return of our community dances and concerts and wheat trucks and other types of events that would happen right downtown, so folks can participate in that way. And so I wanted to share this both with the select board, but also the town, so that they could kind of see that we are moving forward with some of these recommendations that the citizens have been bringing to us, and we'll continue to kind of work on this. One of the things that's on our agenda later is to talk about some architectural and engineering preliminary discussions that we've been having about kind of how this would look. And so that will come up a little bit later today in the meeting, but I open it up for any questions or comments at this time for this.
Martha, what did you get for number of surveys?
128 responses, so a little bit more than I think the ARPA survey. I think we're getting better at giving out the information, and it was very interesting. One of the other questions that we asked in this survey, which I didn't provide the responses for today, was how people found out about this survey. And for many folks, it was via some of our social media posts, both the town website, Front Porch Forum, and then the Shasbury Urbanization Digest, Facebook, and then their email campaign, which is run by a few citizens here in town. So we got it out, I think, in really good ways, and I think that a lot of the Shasbury folks found out, as well as kind of in paper version as well. Some folks found it at their post office or at Collins or some of the other places that we put out paper surveys as well.
Good, very good.
We do have a question. Lisa, go ahead. You're on mute.
Yeah, hello. I just wanted to make a comment. I'm very excited about all of the plans for this. We recently, in our extended family, had one of our nephews become a paraplegic, and it has really raised our family awareness of accessibility issues. And what we found out is that different states really do better and worse jobs at that. And even hotels, like big chain hotels, have things labeled handicap accessible that really are not, like bathrooms and things that are just, it's been really very eye-opening. So my comment is just that as we move forward with the plans for this space, we really make sure that it is fully handicap accessible for wheelchairs and all of the things that would be included in that.
Thank you so much for that comment. We have been working and just kind of closed up a discussion with the State of Vermont on some health equity initiatives, and that is one of the areas that they had brought up and a way to potentially get some of the matching funding if we can kind of provide certain types of spaces. So it is certainly on the Economic Development Committee's mind, and as we're writing grants, always kind of looking to be as inclusive as possible for everybody to contribute to this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes?
Can I just say one thing? So I would like to thank you, Martha, for that. I would just like to say, being on the Economic Development Committee and analyzing the data that came in, I was really proud of everybody in Shasbury for all the responses, because it looks like between the ARPA survey and this survey that people are really interested in sharing their feedback, and that's really helpful for us, for all of us. So I just want to thank all of the residents who, you know, input, their input and took the survey, whether it was, we had paper copies and we had digital. I think there was three paper copies and the rest were digital. So thanks to everybody, and your input is very much welcome.
All right, sir.
Sit here?
If you could come up to the microphone, please.
Yeah? Okay.
Martha, I have a confession. I didn't fill out the survey, so.
You can still send me comments. I'll take them.
And I don't know if this is the right time to make the type of comment. I only have two comments, well, three comments, and I'll make them very brief. I did some, let me just say, we're all stewards of Shasbury. This is our time to take care of this town. Others have preceded us, and some of them have done great jobs, because look what we've inherited. But my thought is that if there is some space in this community building, with the help of the Vermont Historical Society, we may want to commission some type of thing like a mural on one of the walls somewhere that talks about all those who have preceded us, and not just starting in 1761. We have an incredible history, but the stewards prior to 1761 were indigenous folks. And my limited research, which probably took about a half an hour, is that this area was settled by the Mahicans, and that's spelled M-A sometimes, sometimes M-O. And they lived here for hundreds of years. And prior to 1761, they were driven out of here. They were known as the River Folk, because they used the Housak River for transportation northwards. And they were driven out of here by the Mohawks, who were being driven out of their property. And they ended up in Starkbridge area with another tribe. But anyway, that's, my point is, if we have some type of mural that shows the path, the stewardship path through the years, doesn't have to be fancy, big, but it should include the Mahicans, whether they're spelled M-A or M-O. And the Vermont Historical Society has a lot of books and references to their occupancy of our home area for hundreds of years, including maps of their territory and so on. So anyway, that's just one thing. I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up now, but anyway. The other thing is, somewhere I noted, and it may be in the Wikipedia, when I looked up Shasbury, Town of Shasbury, Vermont, and it mentioned that it was the first town to have an underground railroad station. And this was located on the farm known as the Bottom Farm, B-O-T-T-U-M. And this occurred in 1843, excuse me, when five escaped slaves, two adults and three children, were put up at the Bottom Farm in their barn. And the way this underground railway worked, you don't take someone to Montreal or wherever they were going. You pass them on to the next town, the next station, and it's all hush-hush. And anyway, I thought somewhere on that mural should be a reference to the Town of Shasbury's participation in the Underground Railroad. I think that's very important. Anyway, all right. The third thing is, we're going to, one way or another, and I know if Martha's involved, we will, have a nice community center, probably within five years. It's going to have to be maintained.
Yes.
And it has to be for the people of Shasbury. It can't be a place where tourists and people coming through on a rainy day want to go and be entertained. It's got to be for us, and it's got to be maintained properly. I grew up in a, well, I didn't grow up, I was in a town when I was between nine and 18, that did have youth centers, but after two or three years, they were destroyed for various reasons. And they developed a very bad reputation, and people didn't want their children to be hanging out there. So if it's maintained properly, kept clean and safe, and a fun place to go, I think that's very important. And I'm thinking that how can we do that? How can we make sure that the heat is on, or that the walks are plowed or snow removed? Or that there isn't a plumbing problem or something? And my thought would be, maybe one thing, it could have a caretaker unit. And in return for the caretaker keeping an eye on things and being a pair of eyes around the clock, they would get reasonable rental rate. And it doesn't have to be a fancy unit. It could be sort of for a semi-retired person or retired person who's also very handy, knows things about heating systems and plumbing systems. So that's my three remarks. And again, I'm sorry I didn't do the survey, but.
Thank you, Jim.
Do you know where the Bottom Farm was?
It's by the chocolate barn across the, it's on the other side of the road from the chocolate barn, kind of just past it.
Oh, okay.
Bottom Farm? Just before Old Depot Road.
The Bottom Farm, where was that?
Just before Old Depot Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah? No, I didn't know.
Okay, wow.
I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
They're buried in Center Cemetery.
What's that?
The Bottom Farm, they're buried in Center Cemetery.
Yeah, that house goes way back before, you know.
Wow.
It's got a old, an old summer kitchen in the back, like the old, it's quite a property.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Martha, anything else?
Nope, not for me. Thank you so much for all of those comments. We will certainly take those into consideration as we keep moving forward and continue to write grants and work on trying to make this into a reality.
Before we get off the bench? Carl.
Go ahead, Carl.
The one thing I would ask is, is there any plan for a standing committee that would manage events or maintain the area for purposes of events, so that if townspeople wanted to use the facilities for family events, or even if the town wanted to have an event, that they could, if there was a one point of contact, and if they made some events?
So we've talked a little bit about those things, and I think a lot of the programming is going to be done by kind of community partners, so that's one thing. And that's kind of discussed in the recommendations, which are on the town website, if we'd like to read them fully. And as far as kind of, and going back to Bill's comment, I'm sorry, Jim's comment, as well as yours, Carl, the select board has kind of been chatting about the need for another member on the Department of Public Works that may be somebody that would kind of help with opening the doors in the morning and making sure that kind of general maintenance was done, along with making sure the Town Green is moved, because it is a green space at this moment. And so I suspect, and we have not come through with kind of the plan yet, how it will, but it will likely be somebody from the Town Hall that would have kind of access and availability for the schedule to kind of see how and when things would be used and things like that. But it has not been decided.
And I'd like to add one other comment to build on. What Jim just said, there's a wonderful, wonderful article about the economic development in Shasbury that was published in the Bennington Banner on September 11, 1998, which shows into quite detail about how involved the community was.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Thank you. Marissa?
Yes.
I want to thank you and your committee for all the hard work you did, okay?
Thank you.
Excellent job. Mike Anadi, Public Works.
Pretty good.
Let me remember here. Oh, two more pieces of equipment. Village of North Bennington came to me, I don't know, probably a couple weeks ago, and said that they were upgrading their sidewalk machine. And I said, "Really? Why?" "Because it's still a good machine." And he said, "Well, he's just going with a different unit to run another piece of equipment, another attachment." So I said, "Well, you might be interested in that if you can give me a number and what you're going to sell it with." So Norm came back to me, and he said that he will sell the machine, a bucket, snow tires, a V-plow, and a sander, and it'll be available at the end of November for $25,000. Me and Dave have talked about upgrading our sidewalk machine this year. Anyways, it's tired, and I know I'm trying to buy a used machine, but this is actually a well-maintained used machine. And the other benefit from it is, with our sidewalk machine we have right now, we run it in the wintertime, and then it sits all summer. We don't do anything else with it. Where this one is, it's a miniature loader, yeah, so you can put different attachments on it. I mean, we could put forks on it, it has a bucket. I mean, it could be used in the summertime, too, so it wouldn't just be sitting there taking up space like the other piece of equipment. Norm was writing something up for me, and we got our dates mixed up, so I'll have something in writing tomorrow about the whole thing, but I'd like to get approval to purchase.
If we could, because this is in the capital plan to replace the sidewalk machine this year, and this is well within what we budgeted for it. So if we could have a motion to go ahead, it is a machine we know, I've actually always looked at and thought, I wish we had one of these. So, you know, if we could have a motion to go ahead, we did miss the date to get the paperwork here, so we have it tomorrow for purchasing it from North Bennington for $25,000, and I will sign the agreement with North Bennington.
Sure, I can make a motion to purchase the used piece of sidewalk equipment from North Bennington for $25,000.
Wait a second, Dan. Okay, all right, second.
Mike, into the record, could you say the name of the piece of equipment? It's a whacker, right?
Yes, it's a, it's a Whacker WL-30.
Okay, thank you. Just so we don't buy used equipment.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Four zero zero, it's passed. Okay, spend the money.
I will.
We'll wait till the big ones coming up next, so.
Yeah. Boo. So we, for the last few years, a long, actually a long time, been buying international trucks and been using different body plow builders and stuff. Well, I've learning, the more I do this job, I learn something new all the time. And the way we've been doing it is you have, you put it out to bid. And, well, someone came to me and said, you don't have to put it out to bid. You can buy off the state contract. So the truck brand that we use in Allegiance, which used to be DeLoris, is on state contract. And the bodybuilder that we use for all of our trucks right now that we have, including the new one we'd be picking up tomorrow, Viking Sevase is the bodybuilder, and they are on state contract. So talking with both salesmen, Jeff with Allegiance and Mike with IGOT, quotes and specs for a new tandem. And instead of putting it out to bid and going through all that process and everything, I would like to just purchase off of the state contract because it's available for us to do that. And it keeps us with the same truck. And we don't, you know, we don't have to go, oh, well, Peterbilt was lower, but we want an international, you know. So what I'm, what I did was is Jeff wrote me up a quote and everything for the, for both, the truck and the body. And talking with Dave, I think this would fall into about when the truck can be purchased anyways.
Yeah.
The reason I'm doing it so early is because of just, got to get in line to be able to order one. Because even if we weren't purchasing it off state contract, we should be putting it out to bid anyways around now to get in line to be able to have a truck built for us. It would be at twenty twenty-five by the time it would be built. And it was also costs a lot of money.
Yeah. Just so everyone knows, what we're talking about is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purchase of this vehicle. What the board would be voting on tonight is to purchase the vehicle because once we put this in, we're committed to it. This is also part of the capital plan for the town. We didn't plan on this much, but with the good value of the trade-in we'll get, this really won't change the capital plan much at all, you know, unless someone rolls the dump.
Yeah. There is no trade-in to that price. I want to sell the truck outright.
Yeah. But it will make up the money we'll need to make up our shortfall.
When it's time to sell the truck.
And that price is locked in, it doesn't change.
So he told me that, and I don't think he sent it to me, but is there's a, an agreement that he just needs Dave or the board to sign, and then that's locked in. And the same goes for Viking because Jeff took it on as a whole package that Allegiance will pay Viking their share, their part. Because half of this is the truck, and the other half is the body. I wrote down somewhere right here the difference. The truck alone is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred bucks. And the body and the plow and the wing and all the accessories for that is a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred. So that gives you your two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for a plow truck.
If we have money, it's put aside.
Yes.
Yeah.
By the time that the truck would be delivered to the town of Shasbury.
Yeah, the money you set aside and the money we get from the sale of the one we're going to replace.
Which we wouldn't see this one.
Summer of twenty-five, maybe.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
The reason that International and Viking are the state contract holders is because they were the little bidders. The state put this out the bid, and each of those, or all the other body companies and truck companies, they were the little bidders. So this really has been put out to, and they are the ones, right, Mike?
Yes, correct, Art. Thanks for, I was going to say that, and then I totally forgot, but thank you. Yes, that's totally correct. I think they do it every four, four or six years, I can't remember. And they, they put it out to Everest and Viking and Peterbilt and International and all of them. International's been with the state for a long time now. The body changes a lot. The body company.
And they do the research. The state does the research.
Yeah. And then you're getting a volume discount because they're going to sell a lot more trucks through the state bid than they will from just us bidding for one.
And the same, in talking with both salesmen, the same thing when they, when we bid it. So we bid it, and I give it to Jeff. Well, when he does the quotation, he puts his, through the state, you know, they pull out the state bid numbers because we're getting the discount anyways. And the same with the body guys. It's the same way if we were to bid it out, too. This just allows the towns to be able to purchase at a lower price and not have to go through the bidding process.
So we need a motion?
Yeah, let me suggest a motion if I can, because this.
I'll make a motion to purchase this twenty twenty-five International model HV six thirteen truck for two thousand six hundred and seventy.
Hope we can only get it for two thousand six hundred and seventy-five.
Via the state contract.
Motion by Mike, second. Do I have a second? Second by Art.
I think you also should include the body in the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be, I'll just read this off, just so we'll see how we can type it in. A motion to authorize purchase from Allegiance Trucks, HAT Husick, two thousand twenty-five International Model HV six one three, SBA six by four, heavy-duty tandem axle truck with a stainless steel combination dump body, sander, plow, wing, and all necessary hydraulics and attachments for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Get that done.
Carrie, four zero zero. Anything else, Mike?
That's all I really had. Buck Hill's supposed to get paved next week. We're ready for, just waiting on the pavers in this wonderful weather.
Yeah.
Yeah. I talked to them today. They're in Dover right now. And this isn't helping, but you're going Dover, Reed'sboro, then us. So it could be the tail end of this week.
Thank you.
Or not next week.
Next week.
Yeah. You remember my weeks, but. That's all I have. If anybody has anything else.
Thank you, yep. Municipal planning grant resolution.
Yes, we have, we're going to apply for a municipal planning grant to assist the EDC in obtaining a economic development consultant, which we're looking at BRCRC for that right now. I only received a signed document today. It has to be signed by the planning commission first, so I wasn't able to put this around to the board because the board has to sign this. So we're not going to be in contact with the person with BRCRC until next week. But I don't know if you want to postpone this until you can each read this or if you just want me to go through it briefly. It's fairly straightforward, if you prefer that. It's just saying that Shasbury is applying for funding as provided in FY twenty-four Budget Act and may receive awarded funds under the said provisions. This is from the Department of Housing and Community Development. The legislative body of this municipality enters into and agrees to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including a commitment to match funds. We're looking at twenty thousand, so we'd probably match like two thousand of that. That has to be worked out. We're working on the numbers of how much each part would cost. The Municipal Planning Commission recommends applying for said grant. That was approved last week at their meeting, and this is signed by Naomi Mill, the chair. It appoints me as the contact for this, the authorizing official for this, and the person will keep the grant updated. I'm already in the gear system, so I think I'm the only one in town who's in the gear system, so it just kind of makes sense to keep it that way. And it just needs a vote of the board approving us to move forward with the MPG application. This isn't the grant, it's the application for the grant.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move forward the MPG application.
Move by Mike, seconded by.
I'll second.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 If you two would print on the left and sign on the right. And if any of you have a chance to drop by and add your signatures to this over the next couple of days, it'll really come up in about a week when my contact, Janet, comes back and we start working on the actual grant application.
And David, just so, so this municipal planning grant is going to help fund some of the work from the Economic Development Committee, correct?
Correct, yep. It'll, it'll pay for the consultant and other things that come up as we develop or the board, the committee develops an economic plan for the community.
Good, thank you.
Can I have that back, Tony? I don't want to, Tony, can I have that one back?
Oh.
I just want to not mislay it.
Coal Hall Improvement Contracts.
Okay, so we ventured into a contract with Goldstone Architecture to work on making this building completely ADA compliant by putting in what we hope will be approved by the state, a Lula, which is a type of elevator, but much less expensive than an elevator, which would be a great, great benefit to us. This is just, two change orders are ready to this for additional services. Architects Change Order Number One, which I'm asking the board to allow me to sign. I'm the contact for this, this project. What we're asking them to do, it's coming Wednesday, so I hope you have signed this. But we requested a structural engineer to evaluate the entire building before we spend any money on it. It hasn't been done in maybe twenty-three years. The building appears to be in great shape, but it's two hundred and thirty years old. So we'll start there. And then the second part is part of our original plan. They're going to begin plans for renovating the clerk's office and what used to be the lister's office, and it used to be my office and the treasurer's office, to make a better workflow and again, improve the ADA capabilities down there. So that's the first change order. If that's acceptable for the board, if we could have a motion for me to sign that.
Sure, I'll make a motion to allow Dave to sign Change Order Number One.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Seconded by Art. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And Architects Change Order Number Two, to MEP Engineering, which is a sub to Goldstone. This is for evaluating the buildings, or not evaluating, installing new energy systems and planning new energy systems for the building. This one is contingent on the grant I was talking about earlier, the MERP grant. We just were awarded the assessment for that. So if that moves forward into the implementation stage, that's when we will activate Change Order Number Two, but we need to sign it now. The only other way we could go into this is if getting the Lula greatly reduces the cost that we originally told. The original price for having an elevator was about four fifty pre-COVID. It's now seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. So the Lula should greatly reduce that and free up some money for the rest of these projects. But it's really having the MERP assessment and then getting money through the implementation where the services of MEP Engineering will come in to redesign a whole system for this building. So if I could have a vote for me to sign this as part of the contract change order?
Yes, I'll make a motion for Dave to sign Change Order Number Two.
Move by Mike, seconded by.
I'll second.
Seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
So I'll just continue. A lot of, a lot of things are falling into place this week. We were notified at the beginning of the week that we received our one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan to do a wastewater study of the village, which would be specifically around here, too, and a potential for having a community septic area. This has all been, we applied for this months ago. It just takes a long time. Again, this is just something that I'm asking, again, I was assigned as the contact for this, for me to sign this to get it going. It's the last piece of paperwork. And just to remind everybody, it's a one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan with zero interest and zero administrative cost. And we're receiving a grant for one hundred and twenty-five thousand to pay for the whole thing. So it's zero cost to the town. We're just going to get a, get a survey done. So I just need a motion so I can sign this. It is an ongoing project. It's taken a year or so to get the money, but we've gotten it, so.
Yes, I'll make a motion to authorize Dave to sign the agreement.
ESA.
The ESA.
I have a motion by Mike, seconded by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie, four zero zero. Do you want to talk about the architect?
Sure, the last, last thing along the lines of this hall project, which is taking up a lot of space. I did a walkthrough of the area behind Town Hall, where we're talking about having the Village Green Pavilion and Community Center. It was very preliminary. Just wanted to walk it with the representatives from Goldstone because this will be in addition to the Coal Hall contract, no doubt. So engineers from MSK came up, too, so we could talk about all the different things we will need. We will be establishing a committee because we're going to need a committee to be advisors as this project gets underway. They're going to work up a, a kind of a contract of what they suggest we do to keep this moving forward. Like I said, this is all very preliminary, but we have water. We're going to need some kind of septic ore. That may dovetail into whatever is recommended in the ESA. An interesting thing came up. Being architects, the two of them loved the barn that we were going to take down. And they want to look at it and talk about, you know, maybe we can save that. And I was like, well, I'll peel the plywood off the front door, and you can walk around if you want. I don't know, but it's intriguing, but it seems awfully expensive, if even possible. But they want to look, so it can't hurt to look if there's something they can do with it. It probably, we might even get historical grant money to fix it, who knows? It's been around forever. But this is more a notification of where we're going because I wanted to get them on board so we can start talking about dovetailing that into the contract with Coal Hall while we establish a group of citizens who will be advising as that goes forward, whether it's the EDC or members from the EDC and the members from the Select Board, however this pans out. But we need to get it on their radar because as we find out how much MARP money's left from the elevator, how much money's left from the MERP, and how much money we can raise, we need, my thought of what this will produce for us is the conceptual diagrams that people can go out to crowd source more funding. Because we have to have something to present. It's kind of like Arlington Commons when they did a brochure saying, this is what we want to do. We need more than talking ideas. We need something to display to people. So that this is what we're really thinking about. And I think we can do it for a fairly reasonable cost and get a good idea of what it will actually cost in the long run. And then we can start doing the funding. Because the pavilion that we're talking about, there's a Better Neighborhoods Grant, which I've talked to them, they're very excited about the pavilion. That's going to be pretty easily funded. The community center will take a little doing because I don't know how much MARP money will be left, but probably enough to be seed money. But that will definitely take some crowdfunding. And that's required of the Better Neighborhoods. We'll use it on Pavilion, too. We have to have something to go out and raise funds from the community, and then they'll start matching it. So when I get an estimate from this, and we get some ideas kicking around and form a committee that will actually shepherd that part of this project because we have multiple levels of projects going on here. Everything. because we have multiple levels of projects going on here, everything from sewers to elevators to pavilions. So we will need to coordinate a couple of different committees to kind of work on different aspects of this. So updates will be coming on that, they'll let me know as we continue talking about the building and we'll see where we go with that. But because there is a, there is, although it seems distant, December of '25 is when we have to commit all the ARPA money. December '26, it'll have to be spent, and time flies. So these, these projects tend to take a long time, so we have to keep, keep the ball going.
Maybe we'll have a community benefactor.
Well, that's the thing, you know, and if you have a solid plan and a conceptual plan that someone can look at the entire setting here, then you get people interested. It has to be beyond talking and, you know, my scribbles on paper and things like that. It has to be, you know, a nice presentation, and then you, then you can get people interested in it. It's putting out a good vision of the town, what are we all thinking about? So, yeah.
Any questions? Next is Animal Control.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just have a little update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I've been fascinated by all of this. I think that's an amazing price for that plow and everything.
Yeah, it is.
Kind of school bus cost?
Yeah.
That can't plow anymore, but anyway. The last time I came and spoke to you, wonderful people, was about permission to put historical marker
Yep.
in front of the old mill. And then it started raining. I called about a month ago, Vermont Historical in Montpelier, and spoke to a wonderful woman, and she had me in tears. She said, oh, you've called me for a happy reason. Their, their warehouse in Montpelier's underwater.
Oh, right.
She said, I'm, just to think about getting back to doing things like putting up a marker in front of Shasberry's old mill that did not get destroyed.
Yeah.
You know, we're so lucky down here, you really have to wonder.
Yeah.
Shasberry is fine. And so she said, it's gonna be another year. And I said, well, then we'll have to have another party.
Yes.
Being a retired teacher, I had all these grand plans for having kids come do a scavenger hunt and whatnot, not without a bathing suit. I mean, that's, we are the old mill because it's very low. And there's no way we could have kids running around in that front yard until it dries out well. But we're, we're gonna do it. We will definitely get the children over. I love what Jim Cormier was saying. I mean, that gets my creative juices going. We absolutely, you know, with the Vermont Arts Council, could put in a beautiful mural. Because just being on the cemetery committee, which I love, I've learned that the people of Shasberry are not billionaires. They're not terribly famous. They're like the Ordinary Heroes book. There's such history here, such amazing, hardworking, kind, and funny people, you know? And, and the more of that that we can pass on to children, the better. Martha's talking about maybe having some sort of a little fall fest out there. I'm all for doing things as long as you can do them well. Because if, like, having a party and saying, okay, the kids are gonna come over to my front yard on such and such a date and it gets rained out, you know, that just doesn't look good. You know, I want something that's, that's gonna be sure and is, is gonna show the town in the best light. So we're still working on it, and every day it gets a little older.
So the party's postponed for a year?
Not for a year, just till it dries out.
Okay, all right, well, good luck. Good luck.
It's unbelievable, I mean, the grass looks okay, but believe me, it's, it's not. It's bad out there. The, what's going to be next year is the sign.
Right.
The marker.
Right.
And the state does want to come for, you know, some kind of a little festivity. And I said, okay, a party in 2023, a party in 2024. I'm all for it, yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to let you know that we haven't dropped the ball.
Good, thank you.
And I'm just so excited to see what like Tony and Naomi and Martha we all worked on with the ARPA committee. It's happening.
I know.
It's happening. It's gonna be wonderful, it's gonna be wonderful.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for following through. I'm sure Montpelier was happy to get a phone call.
How cool, woman, she was. She's gonna get calls every day from museums that are underwater.
Oh, yeah.
Priceless artifacts washed down the creek.
Oh, my God. Yeah, wow.
Yeah, we have to thank you.
So the Animal Control Officer.
Yes, okay, so effective October 1st, Kelly Coonrad has resigned as Animal Control Officer. She just wants to move on to something else. So we are going to ask the board to appoint Robert Perry as the Animal Control Officer. He's currently our first constable. And we talked about this, he's, he came in, actually, as soon as Kelly decided she wanted to leave, he had talked to her and he came right in and said he wanted to take it over. So we'll appoint him effective, well, we can appoint him effective immediately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And then Kelly will maintain to the end of the month. And let me take that back because we appoint him immediately, I have to pay him. So it'll be October 1st, will be his first day. Don't want to get carried away. Yes, please, a motion to appoint Bob Perry as.
Excuse me, yeah.
Animal Control Officer.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Perry as Animal Control Officer effective October 1st.
Move by Mike, seconded by.
My second, Sam.
Art. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, 400. Other business?
Nothing for me.
We covered it.
Yeah, and I will point out there was an executive session league on here, which I'm not sure if I just left that on. I don't have anything to discuss.
Good.
All right, good.
So I apologize if I had something in mind or that I forgot to take that off when I cut and paste, but I have nothing to say, so we'll just move on from there.
Perfect.
I'll tell, I need a motion to adjourn.
All right, I guess, were there any action items to review? I guess, I don't know.
Mostly my signing all the things we agreed that I would sign and get that going.
All right, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second for Martha. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, guys, and good luck, Martha.